Okay, we're back from our executive session and the next item on our agenda is awards and recognitions. So I am going to turn it over to our superintendent Liz Kirby. Liz?
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin our meeting by recognizing a group of Cleveland Heights University Heights staff members nominated by their peers for going above and beyond to contribute to the culture of excellence in our district and offering support to our Tiger Nation family during these current times. We thank you, we honor you, and we appreciate your commitment to our students and families. The Tiger Team members of the month for the month of December are from the Board of Education, LaShay Daniels, Boulevard Elementary School, Stacy Friedman, Canterbury Elementary School, Nadine Davis, Delisle Option Center, Mark Brown, Fairfax Elementary School, Tawana Smith, Garrity PD School, Sandy Millard, Heights High School, Joe DeMato, Monticello Middle School, Jeff Johnston, Noble Elementary School, Nicole Resner, Oxford Elementary School, Kim Anderson, Roxborough Elementary School, Greg Jacob, and from Roxborough Middle School, Mia Yu. Next is our University Heights Educator of the Year. I am proud to announce that one of our very own teachers was recently named the University Heights Educator of the Year. That teacher is Amanda Blazstick. As an intervention specialist at Garrity Elementary School, Amanda is a tireless advocate for her students with multiple disabilities. She raised over $1,000 to purchase necessities for students and their families. Amanda also volunteers at every school-sponsored food distribution event. Tiger Nation is lucky to have her and she is a shining star and wonderful representation of our district. Next, I'd like to discuss Ohio House Bill 305. Our school district continues to move forward as a united front against unfair Ed Choice voucher laws and as proponents of fair school funding. Ohio lawmakers have been considering House Bill 305, otherwise known as the Fair School Funding Plan. The plan proposes to overhaul overhaul the way state funding for school districts is calculated and distributed, aiming for less reliance on property taxes and helping districts provide the highest quality education possible for each child. As Board President Jody Serini and I were unable to travel to testify again in support of the bill last week, University Heights Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan stepped in to testify at the State House on December 2nd. I sincerely thank Mayor Brennan for advocating on behalf of positive change for the families in not only our communities and schools, but for all of Ohio. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. And now I turn it over to Heights High sophomore Taylor Evans, who will deliver the superintendent's cadre report for December.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Kirby and Mr. Gainer. My name is Taylor Evans and I am a sophomore at Heights High. As a member of the superintendent's student cadre, I am here to give a brief report about what's happening at Heights High and share my experience at the school. I am honored to be here at this event. Thank you for the opportunity. First, I want to tell you about the athletic department and about several upcoming events at Heights High. Due to COVID and rising cases, no sports are being played right now. Even though this is very unfortunate, our student athletes are ready to participate once it is safe later this season. Here are a few important events that are happening at Heights High. As of right now, no events have been planned regarding the music programs, swim cadets, or other extracurricular activities. On the academic side, Heights High School is having ACT testing, which will take place on Saturday, December 12th, and the class of 2023 will participate in a year of PSAT competition. I'm also participating in this event. Last week on December 2nd, our CTE program had a virtual career tech education fair. Now I'd like to talk about what Heights High has meant to me personally, especially during these chaotic times. I've been in the high school district since kindergarten and I have never experienced a year of crazy events like this. In reality, nobody has. The year of 2020 has been rough for everyone, but things have been working out for the best and has taught us all a lot. First off, being a student during this time has been an adjustment personally for me and many of my classmates, but I am so grateful for the amazing teachers who have been supportive in every way. I am thankful for the constant communication, organized schedule, and the constant support. I can honestly say my teachers have been so understanding, productive, and helpful. Many of us students have never done remote learning, so having the support from our teachers is so necessary. Along with the great work from our teachers, the administration has also been very supportive. Following our last student cadre meeting where we spoke on attendance, the new check-in system has been implicated. Of course, my attendance looks much better, but this has definitely been an adjustment. Our teachers have been amazing. Along with doing a great job teaching, I think we have all grown closer. Honestly, almost everyone I've come in contact with during this time, we all have become closer because we now have something in common. It is so true that us as people have more in common than we do apart. Without looking at our social class or our jobs, we are all human. We have emotions in our living life. Now, because of our new way of life, everything is via Zoom, Google Meet, or some online platform. One thing I love about our school is that we always find alternate ways to accomplish the things we are passionate about and still make it fun. For example, we had our first MSA meeting at the high school at the end of October on Google Meet and had just as much fun as we would in person. We played a Kahoot and got to connect with the new students who joined. As far as sports, this past this past football season, I cheered. I miss my cheer sisters and cheer family during this time, but I am thankful that there are people making decisions to keep us safe. We would much rather be safe than sorry. Academically, this year has been very different and challenging. Being a sophomore, I just left my easiest year of high school. I was not expecting this much work. I'm not complaining. I'm very grateful for the challenge. This year, I've taken all honors classes as well as one AP course, and challenging myself has taught me a lot about organization, time management, and learning to take a break. I also had to start making decisions regarding my future, for example, about career tech. School comes before almost everything else, then it's time to relax. I think it is important to do what is best for you, like for me, my education, and also take care of yourself. Like for me, no screen time for a couple of hours. This is all very important. Finally, I would like to say thank you for taking the time to hear from the students. I appreciate being able to voice my opinions, issues, and successes through the student cadre and coming up with solutions. It is great to feel like you have a voice and communicate with those who can help you come up with solutions. It makes students feel accountable for making change which is needed in this world. Heights High has been a blessing, even more so during these uncertain times. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Taylor. And I remember you from Boulevard, so you've been a shining example of students for us. Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is going to be statements from the audience. And the first person I am going to call is Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan. So let me give him a call. Hello, Mayor Brennan. It's Jody Serini from the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District. Are you ready to make your public statement? Okay, can you turn down your Yeah, so I'm going to put you on speaker. Give me a second. I'll let you know when you are able to speak. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead with your
Yes, hi. This is Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan of University Heights. I'd like to start out by thanking Superintendent Elizabeth Kirby for her kind recognition a few minutes ago. Last Wednesday, I testified before the House Finance Committee on House Bill 305, Cut Patterson, a bill to reform public education funding in the state of Ohio. The morning I testified, our public school teachers were out picketing on what turned out to be a snow day. And on that same day, thankfully, the parties reached tentative agreement to end the strike and go forward. The teachers' union membership, I understand, has approved the contract and Board of Education, I believe, is taking it up this evening. So I I thank the teachers' union president Karen Rigo, Superintendent Elizabeth Kirby, school board president Jody Serini, every member of the school board, everyone on both negotiating teams, and all the parties involved for finding common ground to reach an agreement for the benefit of this community, for the students, for the teachers, for all involved. I cannot stress enough how crucial it was for everyone to get together on this two-year contract for the teachers. Everyone at the bargaining table made their points and came away with some wins. But the winners overall are the students and the families of this district. In spite of everything that is stacked against this district, both sides were tenacious in asserting their valid and competing interests. Now, if we would, let us take that tenacity and join together and redirect it to Columbus. With House Bill 305 having passed the House, the work is far from I have spoken to State Senator Senator Daniel Senbilly seven days. I've also spoken with State Senator Matt Dolan, who chairs the Senate Finance Committee, and there is there is still a lot to work out. After speaking with both of them, I know they both understand how important reform is, especially to our district. But that said, we're going to need to keep up the pressure to make it happen. Everyone needs to pivot and be as engaged in fair school funding issues as we were in ensuring fair compensation for our teachers and fiscal sustainability for the district as a whole. Sure of University Heights, our two cities, together with our shared school district. And we can all prosper together and and may we all dedicate our efforts to ensure may seem difficult. The Mayfair Act. So rather than feel spent or exhausted by this last round with each other, let us all feel energized and and have renewed energy by what has been accomplished here and then join forces in this common goal and fight for fair school funding. Thank you for allowing me the time and and thank you all for for everything you've been doing to promote Cleveland Heights and University Heights and and this district and help bring us up and keep us where we ought to be. Thanks.
Thank you. And the next person I'm going to call on our public comments is John Rickert. Hey, Rickert, it's University Heights City School District. Are you ready to make your public comment? Okay, give me a second. I'm going to put you on speaker. Okay, John, can you hear me?
I can.
Go ahead.
Hi, so my name is Jack Rickard of 2015 Woodmere Drive, and I wanted to thank the school board for letting me speak. So I want to speak tonight to acknowledge the board's efforts to rein in what has been out of control spending on healthcare benefits for the CHUH union and kind of to address the future of Cleveland Heights. So to the board, taking on an entrenched, powerful, and well-funded union as we have here in Cleveland Heights was no easy task. I thought the board acted with respect and bigotry as the union acted otherwise. Unfortunately, given the grim financial outlook, this will likely be the first of many upcoming entanglements with this union whose actions clearly is demonstrated as neither the best interest of our children nor the city in mind. I've never chaired one district in Heights all over the country and never have I loved living in a place as wonderful as Cleveland Heights. It really is a city worth fighting for. That said, the very existence of the city is threatened. If we can't fix our house in order, the city is doomed. I will be forced to either merge with the city of Cleveland or see a once proud city fall to complete economic ruin. If you don't believe me, take a look at Scott's five-year forecast and see if you can come away with any different conclusion. So despite passing this levy by under much larger levy, now less than two years away. I I believe this tax base will finally break if seven to 10 additional mills is added to our already enormous property tax rate, which hardly ranks amongst the highest in the nation. We have to do three things. Number one, I agree with Mayor Brennan and I agree with the 15,000 people who voted for the school levy. Ed Choice must be reined in. It is not fair. The state must fund this program and we must tell our leadership in Columbus that they have to fund this program. If that is not possible, then it has to be significantly means tested such that impoverished families can use it, but it should not be used as a tax break for middle-class families. Number two, to the 15,000 people voted against the levy, you are right. A state audit would be reasonable before this another levy is passed in two years. An audit costs $75,000 instead of a budget of over $100 million? This is a reasonable Absolutely. To the 30,000 people who voted for this for against the levy, this union has clearly demonstrated it is no friend of the board, city taxpayers, or kids. They are no willing partner. I am the son of a unionized public school teacher and this this the way this union acted last week was horrible. This union is still unsustainable. This contract is still unsustainable for the city. Future negotiations will be necessary to continue to bring the union contract with what increasingly can actually afford. Finally, I really want to thank the school board for what is a thankless, stressful, and challenging job. Despite the unbelievable venom that was hurled your way last week, the silent majority in Cleveland Heights and University Heights has your back. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person I'm going to call is Karen. Is this Karen? Hi Karen, it's Jody Serini. Are you ready to make your public statement? Okay, give me a second. I'm going to put you on speaker. Okay, Karen, can you hear me?
I can.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, President Serini, Superintendent Kirby, Treasurer Gainer, and the Board of Education for allowing me to speak. My name is Karen Rigo and I am president of Cleveland Heights Teachers Union. It's time to move on from negotiations for a few years. We reached an agreement on December 2nd that both felt they had something they could bring back for It's not perfect, but we did. We did it together. It's time to unite and fight. The enemy is not the Board of Education. The enemy is not administration. The enemy is not the teachers. He is Ed Choice. Local 795 is asking the board and administration to unite so we can fight this together. It's time to put the taxpayers' money where it belongs, and that is with this public school district. Our community, families, and most importantly, the students deserve this. There were many lessons to be learned throughout this whole negotiations process. But the biggest lesson learned is that there is always a path to an agreement, and we found that path together. Let's do it again and find the path to reclaiming the proper funding for our public schools. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Karen. And the last person who signed up to speak tonight is Chrissy Dietrich Gallagher. I'm going to give her a call now. Hi, Chrissy. It's Jody Serini from the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District. Are you ready to make your public statement? Okay, let me get you on speaker. All right, can you hear me?
I can.
Go ahead and make your statement.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, Superintendent Kirby, Treasurer Gainer, and members of the school board. This is Chrissy Dietrich Gallagher from Tiger Nation for Strong Schools. I'm calling to say that I know these past few weeks have been a very difficult, everyone district filled with much uncertainty and much animosity. Many of the parents that we heard from felt torn between the teachers that they know and respect, the administrators they know and respect, and between the school board, their friends and neighbors, who they know and respect. So it came as an enormous relief to all of us, as it no doubt did to all of you, when an agreement was reached. We thank you deeply for your hard work and commitment and for the hard work and commitment of the teachers' union in finding common ground so that the children of Tiger Nation could continue to be educated. I think that everyone recognizes, I'm assuming because it's already been repeated a couple of times by the other callers, that our the terrible position that our district is in financially. And I think that everyone recognizes that this community is strained to its breaking point when it comes to increased property taxes. But I hope that everyone also recognizes who is to blame for this. It's not teachers, it's not administrators, it's not the school board, it's the state of Ohio. The method of funding public education in this state is not only unconstitutional, but also inequitable, unsustainable, and quite frankly, unfair. And it pits people who share the same common interests, the same core values, and the same love of the Heights against one another. We know that the school funding formulas in Ohio have to change. We know the deduction funding of Ed Choice vouchers has got to end. We invite all of Tiger Nation to join in this fight, a fight not against one another, but against deeply misguided legislation. Please visit the Heights Coalition for Public Education either on Facebook or at or on their website at chuh.net/coalition for guidance on action steps that can be taken right now, today and tomorrow, to advocate for the passage of the Fair School Funding Plan by the Ohio Legislature. This bill is the absolute best option we've seen out of Columbus in decades. It is our chance to fix what ails this community so that we can come together and focus our energy and attention, our ideas and our passion on what really matters, the education and the well-being of the children of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments for tonight. And the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. So do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I motion we consider the consent agenda.
Do I have a second to consider the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
The retirements are on the consent agenda, I believe.
Yes, they are. Yes.
So this is another month when I I have to speak about somebody who I was really sad to see their name on the retirement list. And I'm going to try not to get emotional here tonight. But Zakiya Bergen is not an ordinary teacher. My son truly, his life was changed as a result of Zakiya's teaching him and his classmates. Mrs. Bergen is a giant. And she is one of those teachers who you just you just cannot find somebody to fill that classroom. The void that will be left in that building is massive. She teaches with everything that she does, starts with love for her students and an understanding and and a desire to get to a deeper understanding of who her students are. And she is a genuine role model. She makes the teachers around her better, and she will be deeply, deeply missed. Zakiya, I wish you the best things in the world. You have deserved every day of a wonderful retirement. Thank you.
Is there any other consent agenda? I would just like to thank for the donations that we received. I'm always amazed at the generosity of our community. And we have a donation from Heinens tonight that is very generous, and I would just like to thank them for that. I also do want to let everyone know the reason Ms. Lewis is not with us tonight is she is recovering from a surgery. So if you're wondering why there's only four board members tonight, Malia is doing well, but she does need to rest. So any other comments on the consent agenda? If not, then Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Park? Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, there is one item under personnel that is not covered under the consent agenda. This is the approval of tentative agreement with the Cleveland Heights Teachers Union Local 795. And I think I can say that I am thrilled to be having this on the agenda tonight. So do I have a motion to consider the approval of the tentative agreement with the Cleveland Heights Teachers Union Local 795?
I motion that we Yes, I'm so motioned.
Motion to consider it. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the approval of the tentative agreement?
Do we have a presentation at all?
I believe we do.
Yeah.
So let's go through the presentation and then I'll see if we have any questions.
Great. Scott and I will share some key language from this tentative agreement. Scott, I'm going to ask if you can share your screen. Are you able to do that? Because I'm on a phone and a computer that doesn't do well. You can't hear me on this computer. So would you be able to do that, Scott?
Let me try. Okay, we have it there?
Yes, Scott, I can see it.
All right.
Okay. I cannot see it.
No?
But that's okay. I have it up. I mean, I can walk through it. All right. So we wanted this evening just to to share some key features of the tentative agreement with the board and the public that is watching this evening. So as we go to the overview slide, you everyone knows that we have been engaged in contract negotiations really since the late spring. And we were able to conclude our negotiations in a truly marathon evening that ended around 6:30 in the morning to reach a tentative agreement with the teachers' union. I really appreciate the partnership with the union leadership. Karen Rigo and Ari Klein really worked hard with with the board and our team so that we could get to a resolution. I'm happy that the union did ratify this with 94% approval. And we're excited to be able to move forward. We have a lot of, you know, a lot of challenges to continue to work on politically in the state. And we do have that energy, that kind of that that push behind us to keep doing that really, really important and key work. I do agree that this is about the success of our students, but also the success of our community as well, because it is tied so intimately to education and the success of students in Cleveland Heights, University Heights. And South U. Very small section of South U, but I'll say that. So a couple of things I want to point out as we start to look at the duration and other key language in this agreement. The first is that it is two years, and so we were glad that we were able to get to an agreement that goes through June 30th of 20 we were glad that we were able to get to an agreement that goes through June 30th of 2022. We know that that is much better than a one-year agreement. It will give us some time for some labor stability. I'm going to talk through some of the educational elements of the tentative agreement, and then I'll have Scott Gainer talk through some of the fiscal aspects of this agreement. One thing to point out in Article 5B, we do have some language around the process that we will engage in as relates to reductions in force. We will focus less on evaluation ratings under this agreement than we have in previous years. It focused more on years of service to the district. So that will really seniority, seniority being a factor in determining reductions in force as opposed to evaluations. For Article 6A.2, we do have an agreement that will allow teachers in our elementary schools to have duties, rotating duties at the start of the day and at the end of the day. That will help us to manage student safety. I'm going to facilitate student movement. Anyone who has observed an elementary school or middle school, an elementary school, rather, at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day, there's lots of little ones moving all around. And we'll have the, we'll have the ability to partner with our teachers to make sure that that component of the day is adequately covered. We also have, I'm in this agreement, under Article 6H, additional teacher-driven times. It'll be time the teachers have for planning that will happen at the start of the year and before President's Day. All teacher-directed. We also have language in this about supplemental contracts. As you all know, this has definitely been a unique year as it relates to our supplementals, which, you know, addresses the work that our coaches do, our sponsors of extracurricular activities do. This language allows us to prorate these contracts. So if we are in a season like we're in now, where we may not be offering a particular extracurricular activity or a sport, we're able to compensate teachers for the work that they're doing with students at a prorated basis. So that it, so we understand if they are, you know, working with students or not, given the situation, especially around COVID-19 and the pandemic. So those are some key pieces of the educational components of this agreement. And I'm now going to have Scott walk through some key features on the fiscal side.
All right. So the next slide that you see here really speaks to changes that we made in insurance. So we agreed that under Article 8A, employees previously paid $700 a year for single coverage and $1,850 per family. So that was the equivalent of $58.33 a month, single, $154.17 per month, family. So effective March 1st, employees will contribute anywhere between 9 and 11%. There's now a tiered structure that you see in the contract of that monthly premium for medical. So what that means is a, is an increase to $81.64, somewhere between $81.64 and $99.78 per month for single, and between $220.42 and $269.40 per month for family coverage. Again, with this tier system, it's based on a salary. Employees who make less will pay the slightly lower premium at 9%, and the highest paid employees would pay the 11%. The overall savings to the district for the teachers' union change here is $560,000 per county, roughly. There was also, you know, one of the things that we talked a lot about during the bargaining was the plan design. And so there were some insurance plan design changes, or ADE and appendices you'll see in the, in that affected with 2021 calendar year, move from a zero out-of-pocket plan to a $500 single, $1,000 excuse me, family out-of-pocket costs, among other changes, including some copays for, example, some office visit copays, some emergency room copays. Estimated savings of this to the district is approximately half a million dollars per calendar year for the teachers. And also Article 8H, the board is going to provide some additional coverage for disability and life insurance, which our union members and their families in their time of need. We also have under wages pay and STRS pickup, Article 7C6, the board is not paying pickup of the 1% to STRS or SDRS effective this school year. And under Article 7F3, during this school year, base wages remain frozen, but we are giving experience steps. There is a one-time stipend that will be paid to all teachers $500, and that's at the second page in January of 2021 to help offset the impact of production. And then in the second year of this contract, the 2122 school year, base wages will increase by 1% and with experience also being given. Article 7M, we have additional differential pay for special education teachers, related service personnel, and high school counselors to account for workload and service to the district. And then given the change for high school counselors in, we're able to reduce one full-time position permanently. And that's happened this school year, and that was coordinator position. And the last one we have here is Article 7M3 and 7M4. Previously, high school teachers were paid a stipend between 100 and students, and that's been eliminated from the current contract.
Thank you, Scott. So again, just want to thank our board members, our community, our teachers, our administrators, all the different stakeholders who provided their feedback during this process. Again, we thank the union for their collaboration to get, to get the contract resolved. Ultimately, this is, as many have stated this evening, this is about our students. And our students are very lucky to have such a committed group of folks behind them, ensuring that we have the fiscal and educational structures in place so that they can be successful. So thank you all. That concludes our presentation on the tentative agreement.
Thank you, Liz and Scott. Board members, do you have any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. I mean, I think as board members, we've been meeting with our lawyer, lawyers, and we've been at the table. So I'd be surprised if we have any actual questions, but I mean, maybe we still do. But I do want to thank everybody for coming together at the last minute and trying to resolve some of this. Jody and Karen, I really, really appreciate what you folks, what you two have really done to make this happen. So I, that's, that's, I'm just really thankful. I mean, this was devastating for our kids. It was devastating for our families, our entire community. So I'm happy we're able to come to terms.
Thanks, Jim. I would also like to include Liz on that, because she was also an integral part at the end there of helping us get something that was a fair compromise for everyone.
I totally agree. Thanks, Jody.
And Scott, thank you for running numbers constantly. We kept coming back saying, what does this mean? What do, you know, how much is this? Can we do this? So thank you. There were a lot of people up all night. I don't think people realize that. But thank you to everyone who was part of that process.
If I may, I'd like to say a few words. I want to begin by thanking our teachers. This is not a contract that is indexed in any way to their value. On the contrary, it is indexed to, unfortunately, the, the misaligned priorities of our state leadership in Columbus. Our teachers, people like Zakiya, who I mentioned earlier, you can't put a price tag on what it is, the value of what our teachers bring to our kids. And I am just incredibly grateful for the teachers accepting this contract and refocusing their efforts back to that important work. You know, I think it's important to point out that, that, you know, this contract does not keep up with the cost of living. Our teachers are losing money as a result of this contract, which reflects the wrong priorities coming out of Columbus. They're working harder because of the challenges of COVID. I can tell you that firsthand. The planning that is necessary to build lessons in a remote environment, it's a whole new ballgame, and it's a heck of a lot of work to do it at any level that you're satisfied with. You know, and it's not a great surprise that when we look at the future of this career, there's not as many young people entering teacher education programs. Some teacher education programs at colleges and universities are actually closing because there's just not enough candidates. We're losing teachers out. And, you know, and we talk a lot about the importance, I mean, it is incredibly important, the activism, the advocacy that we are all undertaking in and around Columbus to try to shape their actions. I'm unfortunately pretty cynical because I just don't believe that Dolan and Huffman will, will change. I don't think that there's going to be a legislative fix for this problem, which is why I'm very pleased that our district isn't relying on it and that we are simultaneously pursuing a legal challenge, which I believe does exist, and that work is going forward. So it is all important, important work. And Cleveland Heights, University Heights has a long history of this sort of activism that we should all be very proud of. But I think that we also need to talk about the method, and I've talked about this quite a bit throughout this process, that we have still been stuck in this broken record of adversarial bargaining. And I have a sincere hope that we can all commit to using this next couple of years as an opportunity to learn together for all of our professional organizations and our administration to dedicate themselves and our board to dedicate ourselves to finding a better, a better way of negotiating, a better way of coming to agreement. And we have two years to do it. And I think that perhaps we're at a unique time in our district's history when this might be more possible than in the past. I know I'm certainly committed to doing this, and I hope that, that everybody is. We need to build a better culture and a more healthy culture and a culture that's about collaboration. And I believe, I mean, 94% of the teachers just signed this contract, so clearly they're committed to it as well. So teachers, thank you. God bless you for the work that you do every day. You taught me, the people who are in those desks, taught me and taught that. And you're teaching our kids today, and just incredibly grateful for that. So thank you all, and thank you to the community who put up with this nonsense for the past nine months with patience and grace. Much appreciated. So thank you all.
Thanks, Dan. I also hope that the next round of negotiations in two years, and I'm happy that it's two years, can be much more collaborative, not adversarial. And I just hope for a better process in the future. I also want to thank our teachers. I know that this has been a rough road, and thank our community members, and thank all of our staff. It's, this is not the ideal way that we would want this to happen, but I'm glad that we're at a point now where we have an agreement that I think is important because I believe it's sustainable, more sustainable for the long term. And I think we all made important compromises, which is a lesson in itself for our children. Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to just thank, thank the teachers, and I'm glad that we avoided the strike. And I just want to thank the teachers and the staff for the work that they do, because they are much appreciated. And I'm hoping too, in the next two years, that it won't be a rough road like it was.
Thanks, Beverly. So are we ready to vote on this? Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Fainey?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Losh?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is a treasures report. Scott, do you have an update for us?
Just a brief couple of comments. I want to also thank everyone for the advocacy. You know, that's the tapping right on our own school funding. So, you know, I agree with Dan. It's, you know, it's, we'll see what happens, you know, in Columbus. They're not always our friends, but at least we're making an effort that I really, I'm really impressed with. I also just wanted to let the board know that I did submit written testimony as well on House Bill 75, Senate Bill 95, which is around property taxes and districts' ability to challenge commercial property values. So once again, down in Columbus, we had a legislator who was trying to make that process very difficult for school districts. So a lot of the professional organizations have met each other. And, and so we've, we've done some advocacy in that, in that area as well. So hopefully that works out for us. And the last thing I wanted to make sure that you note is that under the finance section, there was an appropriation adjustment of about $33,000 to the general fund. What that is, is a, is CARES funding from the Caga County Board of Health through the ESC to the district to provide aid to disadvantaged families. And so Nancy Pepler really took charge of that whole situation and put together a program where she reached out to the local grocery stores, so Dave's and Zigara's, to provide gift cards to the need over the next couple of weeks that will be distributed by social workers. So I just kind of wanted to make sure to point that out, that that was the purpose of that appropriation adjustment. And it's a really great, great program. The money was very limited in terms of what you could do with it. But because we'd already provided hotspots through other grant funding for, and because we had already provided school supplies for families through other grant funding, this seemed like the most logical use for those funds. And it was a very tight timeline. The ESC said, I want to see a plan. What are you going to do with it? And you need to spend by the end of the month. And Nancy stepped up and organized that. And it's another good thing the district is doing to help support families in the community. So that's it for my report.
Thanks, Scott. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, so I'm going to turn it over to Liz.
All right. I am first going to ask Paul to take us through a presentation on some calendar changes for this year. So I'll turn it over to Paul to walk us through that component. Dr. Lombardo?
All right. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a presentation on a calendar proposal. We know at any time, if there is a change to the current calendar, there is a process that we follow through our Board Policy 8210 and Administrative Guideline 8210. And I want to review the And I want to review the, the policy and the administrative guideline quickly. At least 30 days prior to adopting a school calendar or any change, there needs to be a public hearing on the school calendar. So this one change to the calendar, this would be considered the public hearing, so the board would not need to act at all tonight. The superintendent shall consider the impact of the proposal changes, the student access to instructional programs, incentives for students to participate in career tech education, transportation, the timing of graduation. Although many of those items won't be impacted, that is part of the process. Three, superintendent must consider the compatibility of the proposed change with the scheduling needs of the community of non-public schools to which the district is required to transport students. Advanced notice must be provided. Again, the change does not affect this part of the process. It will be posted on the district website for community input. And the board will take action on this one change if they feel moving forward in mid-January, which would allow us the 30-day prior notice. And the one change I am talking about is, is based on the 795 teachers negotiated contract. You'll see the original calendar on the left-hand side, February 12th, 2020 was a regular school day. The, the proposal and the change based on the negotiated contract would be modifying the, modifying the calendar. So that February 12th, 2020, excuse me, that would be February 21st, excuse me, there's a typo there. That'd be a teacher independent workday, so no students would be in session. So we're going from a regular school day to no students in session. Now, the impact on this, and you may recall, House Bill 164 allows for districts to provide virtual instruction during the 2001, 2000, 2020, 2021 school year. And in doing so, be deemed to have met the minimum hours of instruction required under Ohio law. So although there is one day less, a student instruction, a House Bill 164 does allow us to move forward and have the proper amount of time for student instruction. And that is the short presentation on the one change to the, to the calendar.
All right. So are there any next steps for the board to take here?
No, not at this time. Again, it'll be a 30-day and then we will bring this back up for the board to vote on formally in, in mid-January.
So next I'd like to share my superintendent's report for December. So I know Kathan Kavanaugh will post a couple of slides up for me to walk us through the December report. Kathan, just let me know when it's up.
It's up, we can see it.
Okay, all right, great. So if we go to the slide that has the nine bullet points for December, a couple of things I want to keep everyone updated on as we close out the 2020 school year, or not, not school year, 2020 calendar year. First, right now, end-of-course testing is happening for seniors. They are coming in person in the building to do their end-of-course exams. This is a requirement for students to, to receive certain scores in order to graduate. So the state has not released any of the seniors from that ELC process. And so we do have students coming in on a schedule to get that completed. Under point two, although our MD and A U students are in remote learning as the rest of the district currently is, we do have
We lost your presentation.
Oh, okay.
I think Beverly is presenting somehow now.
Yeah, Beverly, if you can stop presenting.
Okay.
And Kathan, you can present. Sorry.
All right, are we back up?
Yep, we're back up. Thank you.
So we do have an advisory group that is comprised of parents, intervention specialists, related service providers and district administrators. The students and the staff that have started to come in consistently for in-person instruction really have valuable insight to assist us as we continue with our reopening plans. And we also want to make sure that we're offering a quality program, even though we're in the age of the pandemic. So I want to thank Carolyn Dell Anderson, under her leadership, for organizing this group so that we have an opportunity to get continuous feedback. In addition, we are still operating our child find assessment clinic that is operated out of Delisle. And that is where we conduct initial evaluations for students who potentially have disabilities. In addition to reevaluations for students with disabilities as well. We'll continue, and we continue to plan for all of our students, our students with disabilities. Once we have a clear sense of what the COVID spread will be after December 18th, not only, you know, in our district, but the county and also in the state. We also have continued to partner with Metro Health. They've been a wonderful partner for us. They have offered immunization clinics in several of our locations. We have 68 students that have been able to take advantage of this. For point five, we have partnered with Heapy, which is an engineering firm. George Pecac and his team, as we were, as we were planning for the opening of the school year, did assess our heating and cooling systems to make sure that they were aligned with CDC recommendations. But we also got an independent engineering firm to look at our systems as well, just to make sure that we were COVID-ready, knowing that we were hoping to have, you know, more students return to our buildings consistently. There is a 90-page report that they have completed for us and we will post that on our reopening website. I can tell you the long and short of it is that our buildings are ready, COVID-ready, so we do have the mechanisms in place and the equipment in place that they have recommended so that we can maintain the air quality aligned with the CDC recommendations. So again, I want to thank George and his team for that process. It's just always good to have an additional set of eyes, professional eyes on our systems to make sure that we're ready. I mentioned already, we walked through the two-year agreement with 795. I want to thank my team in particular, who have been planning for multiple scenarios all year long. The cabinet has been since March, really kind of thrown into multiple crisis situations to plan for and have done all of that with hard work, grace and flexibility. So I want to thank, thank my cabinet and also thank our administrators, our school administrators as well for their leadership and steadfast hand during these times. We did move all of our students back to remote learning. If you all will recall, we discussed, discussed this in one of our November board meetings that happened a week before the Thanksgiving break, which just as a reminder, that was November 19th. We do have the PSAT that is coming up on January 26th. The high school is working on a pretty extensive plan of offering students additional test prep opportunities, both for the PSAT, which students will, will be taking in January 26th, but also for the SAT that's going to be offered, you know, around several cycles in 2021. So that information will be shared in a comprehensive communication out to high school families so that juniors and seniors and even sophomores who have interest can take advantage of those additional prep opportunities. So more to come soon on that. And then the last thing that I want to share as a part of my report is a recommendation on winter athletics. We did go on a pause a couple of weeks ago. And so now we would like to start slowly and very safe in phase one structures of bringing athletes back soon so that they can at least be ready if we're able to fully resume the season. So we have our athletic director here, Joe D'Amato, to walk through those recommendations.
Thank you Superintendent Kirby. Good evening, board members. As Ms. Kirby mentioned, you know, we collected data throughout Cogga County, Northeast Ohio, even the state. You know, analyzed that. Last time we met, we walked through a number of changes we were going to make at CHUH to make, you know, athletics as safe as possible. We've ultimately taken that and, you know, extrapolated even further to, you know, the nitty-gritty, we're going back to the future, if we will. So when we're looking at practices resuming, you know, Monday, the 14th, we're, we're bringing kids back in pods, which is what we did initially in June and July in our phases. And, and that's really segmenting kids into, into much smaller season to open up for us. You know, OSHA and the governor and all that stuff, you know, allowed us just full-blown practices. You know, we feel it's safest to bring them back into smaller groups and operate practices that way. So with, with a week's preparation and, and practice time, we are looking for competitions to resume Friday, December 18th. We are delaying certain sports where we can. Some of that's a function of their schedule, some of it's a function of, you know, the way things play out and some of the precautions we put in there. But, you know, three of our seven sports wouldn't even potentially resume until after the new year. Additional sports like bowling and swim, we can take their competitions and, and alter them, if you will, in terms of building lanes in between our competitors. Swimming's a sport where, where we're going to look at dividing up boys and girls, both for practices and for competitions. So sort of, you know, chopping the group in half there will, will certainly limit the number of swimmers that are in, in the pool area at that point in time. You know, one thing that was recommended by the we would like to start out and ease our way into this with no fans at home. You know, this would allow our kids to, to have a chance to play. You know, for mom and dad and grandma and grandpa who want to be there, we would stream all those games. We have that capability. We have additional equipment coming in that, that, you know, myself and my staff can operate. So we're not always leaning on the IT department to accomplish that for us. So, you know, we'll take care of everybody in that regard. You know, all of our athletes fill out our final forms accounts. So all of our student athletes have already signed waivers, their return to play and mask policies. We are going to add a, a COVID pledge, which is really going to discourage kids from outside gatherings and things like that. Most of the data that's been compiled is that, you know, kids aren't contracting COVID last letting this group of social interaction out so these you call a week doctors ver conducted a eight myocarditis, we are going to seasonally have the athletes watch that. So the winner spring, the spring athletes have a chance to watch that. Then some, some data that says that that may be helpful in identifying COVID as well. So that'll be an additional layer to our pre-screening process that coach just can admit athletes enter to, to practices and competitions. Five of the schools are already practicing and playing and two are still up in the air. As far as Cogga County is concerned, that number's jumped since the last time we met in terms of teams competing. And, and just based on, you know, data collected from colleagues, again, that number's going to jump again as we, as we hit the end of next week. So, you know, OSHA's not, OSHA and the governor have not altered their plans any which way for this season. So, you know, again, we, we've extrapolated things as, as far as we possibly can to put in the best policies and practices to give our kids an opportunity in, in the safest possible environment. So that is my presentation.
Let me add a couple of things. I'm not sure if, did Joe go in and add a little bit with some of the pieces of the COVID pledge, Dan? Okay, so let me just, I want to, can, can you guys hear me clearly? Okay, great. So I just want to go over a couple of things that, that you may have missed. So in terms of the, the COVID pledges, Dan indicated in our discussions with the boards of health, they've indicated that a lot of the, the issues around COVID spread, again, haven't been in schools, but it's in the social gatherings. And there have been instances in other districts where there've been kind of social events where may have contributed to some of the student athletes getting COVID. And so I'm going to, as many as possible, hit as many teams as possible. And I want to talk with all the athletes. I'm going to share the information that I'm hearing. And we'll ask them to do this COVID pledge as a requirement for participating so that they do understand. You know, it's just like you're an athlete in the NBA bubble or you're an athlete on NFL. When you're in season, you have to be responsible, not only on the field or on the court or in the pool, but also socially too, to use those same guidelines from the CDC. The other thing I want to say, because this was a, actually a really difficult recommendation for me to make. And the thing that really, outside of our, you know, Joe's leadership and, you know, he really has the best protocols, I would, I would say for sure in the county. I know and I've been hearing from many, many, many athletes, many, many parents, many, many coaches. At one point that really jumps out at me is we know that athletics is really important for the college scholarship acquisition race. And if all of the, the schools around us are competing, our kids aren't, even if we choose not to, there's no opportunity for kids to get exposure and for kids to earn those scholarships if there's no, no one left to play. Now, I was hoping that perhaps the state would push back the winter season, you know, let's maybe starting January and go through March or something like that. Unfortunately, at this point, that hasn't happened. And so in order to make sure our kids do have opportunities, you know, to grow, develop, but also get college paid for and have that opportunity, this is why we're making that recommendation. As Joe said, we're adding an, an extra screening tool that isn't required by the state, but just another way to kind of help assess some physical symptoms and to, you know, raise any alarms if necessary, you know, if alarms are raised around student health. And this will be a part of that orientation process. So just wanted to share that as a part of this piece. So that concludes my report. We can go open it up now for, for questions or comments.
When are you going to announce which teams are going to start practicing and which ones you're going to hold back a little bit on?
So Joe, you can, if you want to share which, which those teams are, I know that wrestling is a team that, you know, we're pausing on that one, but you can go through the other ones.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, so again, we're going to, we're going to phase in the practices starting next week. As far as schedules are concerned and competitions, a lot of that organically is not going to happen until after the new year with, with wrestling. Indoor track cheer is something that literally every, every school in Northeast Ohio that we've communicated with, cheerleading is not traveling to any away games. So it's a, for this year, it's a home-only sport. And, and the way this schedule is constructed is we're not at home until after the new year as well. So something we've done in wrestling is, you know, during our downtime, we were able to repurpose one of our, our rooms we use for cardio equipment to provide an additional space to further break up kids when we, when we do start returning. So wrestling now has three areas where they can pod kids up as just one wrestling room. And just as far as wrestling is concerned, there's actually a study out there that, you know, as many people think wrestling is this, you know, rough and, you know, very contact-oriented sport, as far as COVID spread's concerned, it's only one-to-one contact. So the spread of COVID is not as alarming in wrestling as it is in some other things. So.
I, I really appreciate the great deal of, of thought that has gone into this. I think that, you know, there's a, a ton of, of divergent opinions in the community around sports. You know, but I think that we're at a point where everyone is making a very informed decision about the risks that, that exist. And we've, we're doing everything we can to mitigate those risks. You know, I can tell you that having lost the baseball season last spring, I certainly sympathize with families and their concern because um, with families and their concern, because um, you know, these kids have been, you know, playing these sports together for really years and years and years, and these sports mean a great deal to our students. So um, I tend to lean toward returning as safely as possible, but returning to be sure. And uh, you know, I think that, that um, it sounds like Joe's done, as usual, a great job. And I will reiterate, um, the um, broadcast capabilities that we are building for these events is really impressive. And people really ought to try to dial in and watch some of these events. Um, it's the, it's, it's a heck of a show, I'll tell you that much. Um, so and I, I do just need to point out that, that um, the Ohio High School Athletic Association today really did come out with a determination that um, students can wrestle, but not shake hands, because that's too much of a threat for, of, of COVID um, transfer. Just a one of the, the great little things that comes out of the Ohio High School Athletic Association is, yes, you can wrestle, but you're not supposed to shake hands. So, but anyway, thank you, Joe, and bravo for the, for the hard work.
I really just want to employer implore everyone in the community to please be safe, wear your masks. I know holidays are coming up. Please stay home. I really would like to see our kids back in as, as soon as they can and, and just be getting this stuff behind us. Um, so that's just my plea, is asking everyone to please take the measures that we need to be taking in order to drive the rates down. All right. Any other questions for Liz or for Joe on the superintendent's report? If not, I'm going to move on to the board president's report, and the only thing I have to report is that um, I will be attending the uh, school board president's meeting via Zoom again tomorrow. That is um, every other Wednesday. So that group is still meeting, and I'll probably hear what everybody else is planning to do on sports uh, tomorrow. I'm guessing that'll be the topic of the call. Um, are there any board committee reports?
We had a meeting of the um, facilities committee uh, last night, I believe, although the days all seem to be blending together. Um, it was uh, really good to get that group back together because we have some very important um, facilities questions uh, to address. Uh, and so we made some, some good headway. Was very um, impressed with um, George's report about, you know, you, we're, we're doing a little bit of, of making lemonade out of, out of lemons. Um, insofar as, since the buildings are empty, the crews have been able to use that time with empty buildings to get projects accomplished that um, have been sort of on the wish list, but haven't been able to get done. So bravo to, to George and to that whole team for using this opportunity to go a little beyond um, what we thought we were going to do. Um, the Heights Schools Foundation is having uh, our quarterly meeting this week as well. And finally, uh, I, I mentioned the advocacy work that we're doing around um, the lawsuit. Those meetings are ongoing as well.
And I would just like to mention, I'm sorry, uh, I could not attend the Reaching Heights meeting tonight. I don't think any of us could because of the um, scheduling conflict. And it just so happened that uh, because a couple of us were a little busy last Tuesday, we had to move uh, our regular meeting to, or, or move the meeting to tonight. Um, and that goes into our unfinished business, which is just a reminder, next week is uh, our special meeting where we will be interviewing the library board candidates. Um, I believe Roslyn has sent all of us the um, packets. There are, I think, 12 candidates, so it is going to be a long night. Please uh, review through that material and come prepared. So that, we will be kicking off at 6:30 um, next week for that. Any other unfinished business?
Just if people aren't aware, our public libraries are still very much up and running. And um, you know, people should use them. They're, we have a, we're blessed with a fantastic library system in, in the Heights, and they are up and running. Little differently, check the website, call the libraries, you'll be surprised at what's still available to you.
What day is that on, Jody?
Uh, the 15th, Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So any other unfinished business? Any new business?
I have one item of new business. I'm trying to keep it really short and sweet. So we're starting to hear the uh, from the state that they're starting to prioritize how they plan on vaccinating. You know, the whole population of Ohio, and hopefully everybody is going to get vaccinated. Is there any way that we can uh, do some advocacy work to try to get our staff and teachers higher on the list? Is that something that, do we know of any school districts doing?
Um, I don't, but I do have a first ring meeting this week, so I can find out from the ESC what they're hearing on, on that end in particular.
Yeah, I'd love to be, I'm sorry, Jody.
I, I was just wondering if that's also something we could um, get through with our partnership with Metro Health.
Oh yeah, that's a good, that's a great idea. Um.
Yeah, I'll follow up on both of those.
What about the meetings we have with the health department?
Yeah, we don't have one for another. Uh, there's not one this week, but there'll be one next week. Um, and so I can find out also from that group where we are.
So apparently they're, they're doing the Moderna vaccine. And I think the Pfizer vaccine is coming out through, through the clinic. But it might be nice to be able to, I mean, so I think that's been coordinated through the health department. So you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, that's probably a good angle to, to take. So.
Also, um, it'll be important for us to develop some policy as to when the vaccine is, is universally available and uh, how that will fit in with our other vaccine protocols in terms of students attending school. We should, that would be another thing, maybe perhaps with the inner ring.
Yeah, and I'll see if also Dr. Lombardo and his work with Neola to see where they are, um, probably starting to already get that stuff ramped up uh, for districts to adapt to. That tends to be general language. So we'll follow.
Yeah, hopefully we won't have to delay school until there's a, a vaccine. You know, hopefully the count, the, the numbers are going to go down and we can, we could all get back, back in the classroom sooner. Um, but I think everybody does want that protection.
Hey, any other new business items? Any correspondence and announcements? Then, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Roche?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Sreen?
Yes. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.